Questions to a minimum, hopefully. Thank you for attending and welcome to the meeting of the Audits and Standards Committee. This is the first one in the new political year, I believe, isn't it? We've not done another one, that I've forgotten about. If you've got any telephones, just switch them off to silent. This is, I've been told to really, so for the new members this is. Turn the telephones off to silent. This meeting is being public, is a public meeting and is being webcast for the public to view. There are apparently no tests planned for today. If there is an emergency, then please take instructions from the town hall staff. And now we'll move to quick introductions. I am councillor Mohammed Marouf and I'm again the Chair of Audit and Standards for the next year as well. So if we go around and people can introduce themselves, starting with Alison.
Alison Howard, independent co-opted member.
From Belbin, councillor for Firth Parkward and Deputy Chair of the Committee.
Gareth Slater, councillor for Saudiwood.
Matthew Dwyer, councillor for Burleywood.
Simon Clement Jones, councillor for Beechfield Greenhill.
Just the officers, just for the sake of the new members.
Philip Obadet, Democratic Services.
David Hollis, General Counsel.
Philip Gregory, Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Jane Willby, Assistant Director of Finance and Accounting.
Thank you very much for all that and I think the other officers will introduce themselves when they report. They're presenting the reports. There's a special announcement today as well, so I'm going to have to read this one unfortunately. I would like to remind everyone attending and speaking today that we are in the pre-election restriction period. If you've missed it, this means that the council has to be especially aware of its legal duty. Not to publish any material that may be seen in favour of candidate or party in the election. There is also a requirement to ensure government policy is presented in a balanced and even-handed manner. Publicity is given a wide meaning and includes matters set in council hosted meetings. I therefore require everyone speaking today to confine their questions and comments to those strictly necessary to conduct the business on the agenda and not to stray into incidental or related matters that might breach the publicity restrictions. Due to us currently operating within the pre-election period, we are not accepting any public questions or petitions at this particular meeting. So I think for members that's, you will need to behave. And not ask any questions that might breach this because otherwise David will put me into detention. He's already told me this, so. In terms of apologies for absence, we have apologies from James Brackley and councillor Marouf Brown. Exclusion of public and press, I don't think we have any reports today that, which is excluded from the public and press. Oh, sorry, item nine. Thank you, Philip, for any others. Item nine is excluded from the press and public because the report contains exempt information described in paragraph three of part one of schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972, as amended. And I'm sure you've all rehearsed this, ready. When we get to this item, we will pause the webcast and ask any public or press in attendance to leave the meeting. Presume that's yours, Helen, isn't it, this, the report? Apologies, I forgot that, it's always restricted. Next item, declarations of interest. Do any members here wish to declare an interest in any item of business on the agenda today? If so, please just refer to the item of business and state whether it is pecuniary or personal. And outline the reason for the declaration. No declarations at all on that one. Item five is minutes of the previous meeting and I think there's three of us here that were here before as well. So rather than going through every single page, is there anything that members have read that is not correct? Sorry, councillor Slater.
Sorry, it's just a question on page 10, 7.3. I was just a little confused and apologies if it's a rookie question. But it's saying that we're making adjustments to the 2223 Statement of Accounts. Why are we doing that in April 24?
There's a really good reason for this and I should really remember it, but I'll let Ruth answer that one.
Yeah, we've actually got two sets of accounts open. We've got the 2223 accounts and the 2324 accounts. It's because of the delay to the audit. External audit market is in a little bit of flux at the minute and that audit's been delayed. So we make, because we identify changes, we made changes to that account because they were still open.
Thank you so much for that, Ruth. So we'll take item five as being approved. Thank you. We'll move straight into item six, which is the internal audit tactical plan. And Linda will outline the report and then we'll follow that with questions. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just introduce myself as well to the new members. I'm Linda Hunter. I am the Senior Finance Manager for Internal Audit and Risk. And today, the paper you've got there, the item six, is our internal audit tactical plan for 2425. So I'll just highlight some key points for you. It's our programme of work for internal audit for 2425. We've actually started some of the audits the first of April 2024, so somewhere at fieldwork or scoping stage. The plan has to be flexible and reactive because we need to respond promptly to any new issues or changing risks that the council faces. So we do review the plan on a continuous basis. I have to make sure there's enough coverage across all the areas of the council. So I feel like for me to do my audit opinion, which will be in September of each year, I do this to you. There is enough coverage in this plan for me to actually be able to provide that opinion for next year. That is basically actually, we need to complete them, we need to complete the audits. On page 18, that's a key area there, that tells you about our planning methodology. So it gives you just some examples as to what we've considered when we've developed this plan. So for example, we've looked at the risk registers, the annual governance statement and discussed the areas with each director, exec director and head of service within those directories. And the plan is similar to previous year's formats. So there's different tabs, so there's a tab for each directorate. We've got a corporate tab, investigations, time for investigations and main financial systems. You'll see that as you go through the plan, which is the appendix to the report. And then there's also columns within the plan that refer to, where it's referenced to either the risk register or the corporate risk register and also the council plan, the 2428 council plan. Page 22, that gives you the total there. So the total for our audit plan for this year is 1,551 days. And that is because of all the directories and different activities. And then on page 23, it highlights there, so our aim is to deliver 117 outputs. So that's within those 1,551 days. What I do each year is if there's some significant changes and we say significant is within 15%, then 15% and above, I will come back to this audit committee then at the October meeting and inform you of the changes that we've had to make during the year. And that highlights where I've had to be sort of reactive and reflective to audits as they've been identified during the year. And so the recommendation I've asked for the audit committee is if you endorse the programme of work for our internal audit for 2425 and it's open, if there's any questions, anybody got any questions on the paper? I think it was in two parts, I think you might find there was the word report and then there was the tab as well with the Excel spreadsheet that had the detailed plan. I think somebody had to hand up there.
Alison and then councillor Slater. Linda, you did get the comments from James Brackley, didn't you? So if you'd like to comment on those as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alison.
Hi Linda. Could you just update the committee on the staffing situation within internal audit at the moment? I know last year you had some vacancies and that was impacting on your work a bit. So can you update the committee on the current situation?
Yeah, the current situation we've got, yeah, we've still got one. We've got a vacancy at a grade six level. So so we've only got the one vacancy at the moment. We've been out, to be fair, we've been out to recruit twice for that grade and not been successful. So we're trying for a third time at that grade, so we've still got that one vacancy, but the posts are all filled, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Slater.
Sorry, got a few. So one was on the agenda, item six. On there, it's got proactive fraud reviews and then I can't see anything against it at all. Does that mean we're not doing any? Is it probably easiest if I do all the questions and then?
Yeah, we'll jump into that. Yeah, so we have got, there are five proactive fraud reviews in there. So I think that's, you've just seen the summary on that first sheet. So if you go through to the investigations tab, we have highlighted the five proactive reviews down there. And for example, one of them is within the registrar service. So we've got an example there as the proactive review. I think if you look at the left-hand column, it's on page 18, I'm not sure if that's page 18 on your pack. The left-hand column says proactive fraud reviews and it's got the five listed there. Can you find that on page 18?
Yeah, got that, sorry, I was looking at page one where it's doing the days allocation. And as far as I can see, that's got zero against it.
Right, no, there is, there is five actual, there is five audits in there. So it shouldn't have, you look at the front page.
Yeah.
No, that's an error there, there is an error there, it has got, we've got the proactive, we've got five days, five audits there.
Okay.
So it hasn't pulled through the days, yeah.
Okay. The other one, back to the main book now, part eight, page 18. The suggestions on the people it's asking for the risk assessment. Are we going to be doing anything at a lower level as well? I'm just seeing, some of these people might not, because they're higher up, they might not be able to see sort of lower level detail. So is there a sort of approach that we're going to do? So I'm thinking of something similar to Sarbe and Oxley, where you've got the different levels of granulation. So a person might, at a lower level, might only be responsible for calling out an issue of a couple of thousand. Whereas if you get higher up, be that sort of thing. Is that something we're going to look at as well? That was a question for that. I'll do the other ones, yeah. How often are internal audits, how many are we sort of going to be doing by section? Will we get the audit methodology as in terms of what we're going to be looking for by area as well? And on the 15%, is that a financial only? Or would that be, also include things like 15% of our statutory work isn't being completed, for example? Sorry, many questions there, I'll shut up there.
Oh no, you're all right, so I'll go there. Yeah, the lower levels, so what we do is when we're scoping an audit, we will discuss, so it's not just like some exec director or directorate. So what we do is when we're scoping an audit, we discuss that with the head of service or the individuals when we're progressing with that audit as well. So we do involve the lower level staff within each audit as well. So like I say, we're not just restricting to the, you know, the high, the high level staff on those. The methodology of the methodology, I haven't shared that previously, but what I can do, I can email round if you want me to share round. What I can do, I can share round our audit methodology. And I can also share round, we score each activity, each audit that's in that, the plan. So we rank them, so that's where you'll see there's a column there saying high, well, most of them are high. That's why they've hit the plan. But yeah, we do have a planning methodology and a scoring risk assessment as well that we do. So I can share that with you, that help an email to all members. Yeah, see some nodding heads, so I'll share that. And the 15%, where I said significant, that is, is if it's, if I change within, I said 117 outputs. So 15% is if I do more than 117 outputs, so I take them out of the plan. So that's what it means, it's purely in our output figure, nothing to do with financial or anything like that, it's just literally. If I, for example, if I take 30 audits out, that is where I should be raising it with you because I've taken 30 out. So why have I taken 30 out? And it could be like, as mentioned a minute ago, is it because of staffing levels? Or is it because we've had long-term sickness or sickness levels? So that is when I bring it back, where I think the significant issue is that we're not going to deliver all our outputs. So I think that was, that answered all those questions.
So just on the last one then, sorry, appreciate your point about the 15%, apologies on that. But is the review just looking at financial points? Or is it looking at making sure that statutory work is done?
Yeah, we cover everything. So yeah, we look at financial, we look at statutory work. Yeah, so it is a mix of both. So you'll see in, within that, within that review, it could just be, we could do a risk-based audit or it could be just consultancy. We're advising on a new policy or a process. So yeah, it is a mixture of things that are in there. We do IT application audits as well. So yeah, there's quite a mix of different techniques that we use to do individual audits. And I think the Chair did mention, you mentioned a couple of things that I think were raised by our email as well, wasn't there? So one of them, which was just a comment actually, that they actually mentioned that it was nice to see that we've got section 114 lessons learnt in the plan. So that was a, just a comment that the May saying, it was, it was good to see that that was in the plan. There was a question around the IT applications and, you know, what we're going to do on the scoping of that. So what I'd say for that is that we'll scope that with our IT colleagues. What we're going to do is identify the IT systems that are near, near the end of that contract. Just to make sure that we're giving enough time to re-tender and to re-evaluate that system and make sure there's plenty timeline and running up to that before, before we need to enter into a new contract. So that's the sort of the audit we're looking at within the IT systems. And then the other question was about equal pay and audits of like grading and job evaluation. And again, we have audited before, we have historically done, where we've got involved in looking at grading and job evaluations. And that's something that we'll discuss with the Director of People and Organisation Culture. So that's what we discuss with her. So they were raised independently via an email that I'll respond to as well in more detail to that person that raised those questions. So I think that probably that didn't teach her.
Thank you very much, Linda. Are there any further questions before I ask mine? No further questions. The only one that I've got was one that Alison asked around staffing and I think you've answered that one. So that's one question less for you. My, my question was particularly around page 26, the cross-director PFI exit strategy. Just, can you just expand on that a little bit? What would be doing in the exit strategy? Why is it on the, on the list here? Probably the question really. Is this the schools PFI we're talking about?
Let's have a look. Yes, it'd be the schools. So that is the schools PFIs, that they just wanted to look at the controls that are in place for exiting that. The PFI for the schools, yeah, let's have a look.
Yeah, just to build on that answer, so with PFI contracts, one of the key risks is that the PFI contractor hasn't managed their obligations properly as part of the contract. So as we prepare to exit the contract, part of that is holding the contractor to account to make sure that they have delivered everything that they should have done. Particularly with built assets, to make sure that things are properly maintained, that they've been put in place in the correct ways and where things have been replaced at their to the right standard. And it's often the case that those are not in place. And you don't want to do that when you get to the point of contract expiry, you want to do that a few years before. So preparing for PFI expire is really important so that you're holding to account the contractor with enough time for them to remedy the issues that you might find.
No, thank you, thank you very much for that because I, this is something I have been talking about on a regular basis at the forums where these schools are actually coming back to us and they should be in the same condition returning to us as they were on day one. And therefore this is a very important piece of work that we really need to do because clearly there's going to be huge amounts of dilapidations involved in this. That could run into hundreds of thousands of pounds. So I totally welcome this and I welcome the fact that it's, and I'm sure other members will agree with me on this because otherwise the council could be in difficulties in terms of them not getting something back in the condition it should have been in. Or this.
Sorry, just on this, this one, yes. So in the column on this one, it does specifically say it's in support of the connected Sheffield and creative and entrepreneurial Sheffield items in the council plan. So that does stand as if it's very specific what we're talking about there and possibly not just about schools. So when you're saying that, are you talking about things like the Amy contracts and so on as well?
Principle of PFI will apply to any PFI. So whether it's something like Howden House or the other contracts with Amy and Viola, those principles will still apply. And we'll still be looking at how we manage those contracts in the same way.
Thank you for that. I just specifically mentioned schools because it's one that I can remember easily. Councillor Dwyer.
Thank you. You mentioned the equal, one of the questions that was emailed in was about equal pay. And then you start discussing grading and the risk. Can you, what job evaluation and grading system does the council use? And does that open us up to risk for equal pay claims?
The council does, sorry, can I, do you want me to come in there, Linda?
Oh yeah, please.
Yeah, the council's currently doing some work on its establishment, some significant work on its establishment and its HR policies generally. That's been led within, by the Director of People and Organisational Culture at the moment. So we're thinking it's not one of those matters that would be suitable for audit at the present time, given that there's significant work ongoing at the present, looking at the establishment and HR policies at the moment. Thank you, David. Unless there's any further questions, we'll move on to the recommendation. If there's no further questions, the recommendation is it is recommended that members endorse the attached programme of work for 2425. Has everybody agreed on that? Thank you, thank you, Linda, I know you're on leave, so you can, you can stay if you wish, but you can leave.
It's like I, I can stay now, you're okay.
All right, thank you. Switch myself off here. Moving on to item seven, this is a Statement of Accounts 2324, which is the un-audited version. And it's Claire and Ruth to present this and we'll follow it up with questions if we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So this, the purpose of this report is to inform members that the draft 2324 accounts were published on the 31st of May and are now available for review. The report in your pack includes the main statements and to give the committee a first look at the 2324 position. But members are advised to take a closer look at the full set of accounts, which can be found following the link in paragraph one of your report pack or via the council's website. The draft set of accounts is now subject to external audit by KPMG and are also available for public inspection from the 3rd of June until the 12th of July. As we go through the audit and offices continue to review, there will be amendments, but they don't usually change significantly. So in preparation for the final approval by this committee, to allow yourselves to become comfortable before signing, we do ask that you please start to review the full set of accounts now. This is mainly because our hands are tied by accounting standards and legislation and the presentation of accounts is fairly technical and can be difficult to understand. So it's important that we give you the right level of support to understand, challenge and ultimately be in a position to approve. Therefore, we ask that you contact Claire or myself with any questions or requests for further detail behind the big figures. In previous years, we've arranged an independent trainer to provide members with coaching on how to understand the accounts so they can guide you on where to question and challenge. Again, we plan to arrange that in advance of the approval date. The final audited version will come back to this committee for approval. The timing of which is dependent on the progress of KPMG's audit, any objections received from the public inspection period and also the legislation changes that we expect, which would see backstop dates put point in place to extend the audit deadlines over the next five years. But this has been impacted by the announcement of the general election. So the recommendation of this report is to ask the committee to note the core statements and the disclosure notes within the un-audited accounts. Claire and myself are happy to take questions now, but if you prefer to raise outside the meeting so that we can provide a more detailed response, we're happy to do that as well. Thank you.
Any questions? Councillor Clement Jones and then councillor Slater.
Thank you, Chair. It's really around the timetable. I've been on the audit committee longer than I care to, to think about. And, you know, we've not, not in come close in recent years. Has, well, I mean, in your opinion, are we, are we going to be getting, you know, over the next five years? Are we going to be getting the resources in there in terms of resources we're getting from our outside auditors to actually realistically hit these timetables this year? Or maybe next year? Or maybe in five years' time? I mean, what, what can we expect this year? You know, are these, you know, are these fantasy dates or are we expecting to hit those? And then just really, what, you know, is there any real impact to the legislation not getting through in terms of that September deadline if that doesn't happen?
Thanks, yeah. So the timetable has been challenging, as you say, and it was, and it's, it's come about as a series of unprecedented events, for example, Covid. There was some draft legislation, some amended legislation, I should say, that delayed the statutory deadlines. And I think that the sector has then struggled to get back on track because of those delays. The last I heard, there were about 900 uncompleted audits across the local government sector. So we've only got the 2223 accounts open at the moment. And then obviously these ones, we're hoping will just follow the normal timetable. You'll be aware as well that we've just changed, under the audit contracts, we've just changed our auditors to KPMG. We've had EY for the last five years and then for the 2324 set of statements, that's going to be audited by EY. They haven't, they, they don't have a backlog of audits to complete because they have been out of the market for the last five years. So they've already started auditing. They've been looking at our accounts in preparation since about October, November last year. So they've done a lot of fieldwork already on that. And they have assured us that they're going to come in in July and start on a normal timetable. What will affect them being able to actually complete that timetable by the 30th of September, which is what should happen in the, in the legislation, is that because the general election's been called, there was, there was some draft legislation that was proposing how to kind of clean up this issue and get back on track. So there was a series of backstop dates that Deluc and the Financial Reporting Council recommended where they were giving the audit sector a deadline for each set of accounts that's outstanding. So what that means for our current set of accounts is that unless, if that then gets delayed. So the first one for 2223, which is the only one we've got outstanding, is the 30th of September. If that legislation is delayed and then EY, who are previous auditors for that set of accounts, can't deliver that, it will just impact KPMG for 2324 because of the opening balances and that they won't have that assurance on the opening balances. Now, the legislation also makes provision for us to, for the auditors, sorry, to disclaim or provide a limitation of scope. That's how they're going to catch up. Some accounts now will be almost not irrelevant, but you know, the timing of, you know, if you've got accounts open for years and years prior to that, you know, what's the relevance when we've got future sets of accounts coming along as well? So they've, they've given them a provision in the legislation about actually disclaiming an audit or just doing a limited audit to be able to allow them to catch up. And that's might, might be what we get for 2223 accounts. But what that means as well is that KPMG will still need to do further work on this set of accounts because they haven't got a set of opening balances that's had a full audit. So for their own assurance processes and their own risk, they will want to do further, which is why they've been in since October really, looking at really, you know, previous years already to give themselves that extra assurance. Does that, is that okay?
Yes.
Councillor Slater.
So a couple of, so I was looking at the increase in bad debt provision on page 57. Is that in line, oh sorry, I guess the first question, is that in line with other cities, that sort of question? The other one, depreciation of our presumably housing stock of £107 million. That seem, so yeah. Have you got the detail on that one? Page 57, appendix seven. Yeah, appendix seven. The housing revenue account. And then the other one on page, sorry, do you want me to stick, yeah, that's it on that one, I'll come back to, yeah.
Yeah, so we obviously, we have a large housing stock, about 38,000 assets. So that is the depreciation figure. The, the change. The, the change from last year, there was just a slight increase in depreciation, one point six million, but there was a twenty-nine million decrease in revaluations, so the valuations have come down. And, and yeah, so they're, they're valued by our property surveyors and according to the latest housing price index, so that's, that's what's affected that figure. So net of about twenty-seven and a half million change from last year.
And the bad debt bit, sorry.
So it's changed by, sorry, I was looking at the, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, so it's been a decrease in the rents, bad debt provision, lower arrears and lower uncollect, uncollectible debt from last year.
Then the other one was on page fifty-nine. It looks like we've dropped the appeals provision considerably down from ten million to one point six? Ten point eight down to one point six? And finishing on that, what, and again rookie question, sorry, what is renewable energy disregarded? And then the other one, have we got the notes? Because obviously looking at the last one, there was notes eight and nine, but I can't actually find the notes themselves.
So that refers to the, this is an extracted statement from the statement of accounts, so if you go into the statement of accounts online, yeah, the notes eight and nine will be on there, yeah. So it just, it just breaks it down into further detail, this is just the statement. On the, I think we might need to come back to you on the appeals provision. We'll, we'll need to go ask the team on that one if that's okay, we'll give you, we'll bring you a breakdown of that.
And the other one, sorry, what is that renewable energy disregarded?
I've, I've noted that one down, so from the collection point, we'll come back to an appeals provision and the energy disregarded.
Councillor Dwyer?
Thank you, mine's a bit of a rookie question in that, so can you explain the different types of reserves and what is particularly this unusable reserves that's quite significant?
Okay, so we have usable reserves, which are cashback reserves, so that, they absorb the time in differences, we save up money to where we have long-term contracts and things like that and, you know, they, they always set aside money for future known liabilities or just to manage contractual fluctuations. The unusable reserves are really the accounting reserves, the paper reserves, so the top and the bottom half of the balance sheet you have to balance, so if we increase the value of a property, for example, that, the other side of it has to go somewhere, so it, it goes into the, into like a paper reserve essentially. Those are unusable reserves, they're, they're just there to, to balance the balance sheet and then they're, they're not realisable reserves and they're, they're just, they're accounting for the estimates, so the estimate in anything that's been valued essentially and, you know, pension fund, the, the asset base, that kind of thing.
Don't think there's any further questions, can you just comment on the questions that have been raised by James Brackley as well? On the twenty-three, twenty-four draft accounts. Sorry, you, you didn't get this, did you?
No.
Well, do apologise for that one. It's quite a lengthy one here, isn't it really? Can we just say that you, can we forward it to, to them and then you can comment? Otherwise, if I read it, it's quite a long, lengthy list of questions or comments here and it could take quite some time.
Chair, could that be forwarded to all members of the committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just one question from me and I might have misunderstood it, but when somebody talks about value, I get excited, as you well know. It, it was about the, the housing stock. Did I hear rightly that it's been downvalued in today's market? I might have misunderstood, I, I do apologise if I have.
So the actual valuations have increased at the end of this financial year by so, by fifty-three point one million, you'll see that on the balance sheet, but it's, but the depreciation, it was on the beginning, on the beginning position of the year, the first of April, so which is why it looks like a lower figure, but actually when we got to the end of the year and the properties were revalued, it's gone up by fifty-three million.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I thought I'd been doing all my valuations wrong, if, if the market's going down, so thank you for that. All that remains for me to do now is just to say that you've read the recommendation, members, the Audit and Standards Committee has asked to note the core statements and the keynotes to the un-audited statement of accounts for twenty-three, twenty-four, are we all happy with that? Thank you, that's fine, thank you very much. And you can stay if you want, if you don't, that's fine as well. England are winning one-nil by the way. We move on to item eight, which is the work programme.
Thank you. The draft work programme for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five is in your agenda packs from page sixty-one onwards. The recommendation is to approve the work programme, but it's your work programme, so please have a look and just note the programme ahead. Thank you Chair.
Thank you for that Philip, but because we've got quite a number of new councillors on audit and standards, it might not be something that we want to particularly talk about or debate today, but if you can take it away, look at it and see what your thoughts are, then we can talk about it at the next Audit and Standards Committee to outline what, what we want as priorities and what areas we want report back to, to this committee. So thank you for that. This is the time when we stop web.
Thank you Chair, just one matter on the work programme, currently the annual governance statement is due, I think it's in March, that needs to align with the statement of accounts, the audited statement of accounts approval, because the annual governance statement should be published as approved by this committee with the audited accounts. The, as we've heard, the deadline for that should be the thirtieth of September, so it suggests that we put it on the same agenda as the approval of the audited accounts. If that gets moved, then we can move the annual governance statement as well, but they, they should be on the same agenda for approval at the same time.
Thank you David, so we, we'll factor that into the timetable, yeah?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. I think this is the time when we stop webcasting and we listen to the six monthly review from Helen and Samina, I think it is. So this is where we get these colourful charts, don't we?